It's 6:30. I hereby call this workshop to order and we're going to get right to it. We have a presentation by staff.
Yeah, Robin, if you'd like to take us off, thank you.
Absolutely. Let's get the PowerPoint up. Short-term rentals, how did we get here? About a year ago, we presented to staff, staff presented to council, a proposed ordinance on short-term rentals. At that time, we, it was tabled in consideration of a noise ordinance, which was very shortly passed thereafter, and a party house ordinance, which was then tabled. After some time in getting our new councilperson and city manager on board, we are back for 2.0 short-term rental draft presentation to you. The first thing we want to do is explain what is a short-term rental so that we are all on the same page. They are actually defined by the state as anything that is a bedroom or a home that is leased to a transient person for less than 30 days at a time. On the right is a snapshot of these different online platforms that host these listings. There are many out there. You'll hear, I think the most common one we hear today is Airbnb and VRBO. Why an ordinance is being considered is because for two main reasons. We want to make sure to protect the health and safety of our current residents and our visitors, as well as preserve the residential character of our neighborhoods. Staff looked at various ordinances that are used across the state to achieve these goals and found some common tools that were used that we'll present to you tonight, such as inspections for fire and building and code enforcement, requiring a local contact. This is somebody who can be on-site very quickly if there's any issues. And various forms of regulation, such as where parking can and cannot occur, noise levels, special events if they can't or can't be held at the site, and even garbage and how it's stored. So we're proposing tonight a draft ordinance to get us started. Right now, these, this is a permitted use that is unregulated. And so the ordinance would require a permit, an annual permit. And it would be allowed, this use would be allowed in anything that is residential. It would not be allowed in detached structures or in RVs, treehouses, yurts, or other of those types of creative uses that we've seen around. So they would not be permitted in those. We would want to make sure that the ordinance states that all parking associated with the short-term rental would have to be off or on the property, off-street, on the property, and on a paved surface. And that garbage would have to be screened from view. Now that's, this is not an ordinance that we have in the city. These are extra above and beyond. It would also regulate that only a bedroom, as defined by the International Building Code, so only a bedroom can be used for sleeping. Later on in the presentation, our code enforcement officer is going to explain exactly, and a fire marshal is going to explain exactly what that means, what a bit, how a bedroom is defined. And that there would be a maximum of three persons per bedroom. So essentially, if only a bedroom can be used and there's a maximum of three people, there ends up being a maximum overnight occupancy rate. The ordinance would state that no special events of any kind or parties can occur in a short-term rental. They can, of course, continue to happen in our homes that are not short-term rentals, but in this ordinance, they could not occur in a short-term rental. And all of these requirements would have to be very clearly posted to the people who attended or were staying at the property so that there's no excuse for bad or unneighborly behavior. The operators of these would have to keep a guest register, which would include the names, phone numbers, current addresses of the people staying, as well as the make and models and plate numbers of their vehicles. And they would need to post that phone number of that local contact person so that if there's any issue, even the people who are staying there overnight can have a phone number that they can contact. And what that local contact person per the ordinance would have to be is somebody who is 21 years or older and can respond to calls from either the occupants or the city if we have any issues, 24 hours, seven days, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, as well as be on the site if there are issues within an hour. I'm going to, as far as the applications go, we've got, staff is going to present some details on their aspect. The fire marshal will, in just a second, go over what he's going to be looking for, as well as our code enforcement inspector, what he's going to be looking for. Did want to make sure that you knew that the state does require and is currently collecting local and state lodging tax through these online platforms now. And so we have been getting some of that revenue. And that we would require an occupational certificate for each short-term rental. Next up, our fire marshal will go over what he's looking for. Yes.
All right, good evening. So basically, we're looking for things as the fire marshal that is going to involve, as Robin said earlier in one of the slides, protecting the safety of the guests in the short-term rental occupancies. We're not going to go as far as you would see in your hotels, motels, but we are going to try to increase the safety that's required or the safety features that are required. And I speak from experience because I've stayed in some short-term rentals that have been less safe than I would expect. So one of the things that we are going to require, and I think I put a copy on everyone's chair up there of a sample or a draft of my inspection report that I'm looking for. One of the things I would require is a fire extinguisher in every short-term rental. And not just a fire extinguisher, but a tagged certified fire extinguisher like we have somewhere to here in City Hall with the yellow tags that you see in businesses. Making sure that that fire extinguisher is functioning, has been inspected. And it may need more than one depending on the size of the building. My recommendation would be one per floor. And those fire extinguishers need to be visible, not hidden in cabinetry, not hidden in closets. They need to be visible, hanging on the wall like we have them in other buildings. Smoke alarms in the structure would need to be upgraded to the current code. So if your house was built prior to the current code addition and it becomes a short-term rental, this would need some upgrading. Not a significant budget item if necessary. It could typically be accomplished by about $30 to $40 per smoke alarm. But the current code says that the homes are supposed to have a smoke alarm inside every bedroom, outside of the bedrooms, in the hallway areas, and in the living areas, as well as at least one smoke alarm on each floor of the home. So if you don't have smoke alarms to the current code, we would require those to be brought up. If the home uses any sort of propane, natural gas, or wood-burning appliances, they would have to have carbon monoxide alarms in them that are in accordance to the recommendations for those, which would be essentially one on every level of the home. We would enforce some safe outdoor cooking procedures, things like distances from the combustible siding, distances from combustible decks for things like fire pits and grilling. And then, part of what Robin said earlier about bedrooms, we want to make sure that the means of egress or the exits are available so that the doors are easily operated, that they're noticeable. And then, one of the problems with people using rooms that are not identified as bedrooms, per the International Building Code, as a bedroom, is a bedroom is required to have a secondary means of egress, a window, for example. And if you put people in a room that does not have that secondary means of egress, you're putting their lives in danger if there is a fire out in the hallway. They would not be able to have that secondary means of escape. So we would be making sure that the egresses, the exits, the windows in the bedrooms are available, functioning, and able to be used for that egress. And then, one of our number-one causes of fires in the residential setting is extension cords being used as permanent wiring. So things like garage refrigerators being plugged into extension cords, et cetera. We're going to make sure that that is not happening in the short-term rental buildings. We can't go into your private home and look for those, but if you're renting your home out, especially in this short-term rental situation, we're going to make sure that you're not using extension cords as permanent wiring. And that's all I have. I think I'll pass it on to Tim.
Good evening. I have also put together a draft inspection report of which I will. So what we're going to be looking for in code enforcement are the things that you see on the slide. In my draft inspection report, which could change based upon, if the ordinance changes numbers and things like that, we would have basically a three-part inspection. We would do the exterior, where we're going to be looking to make sure that, you know, all properties are identified with the proper house numbers of the right size posted in the proper way. We have sufficient parking for multiple vehicles that would be compliant with our parking ordinance 7817. We would look for an appropriate garbage storage location area that would be compliant with this ordinance. We would also check all our pool barriers, hot tub covers, pool fences, and all those things. And then, again, we have that in our ordinance already under Chapter 18. We would also look for exterior compliance to the International Property Maintenance Code. If people have to go upstairs, you know, to a landing or whatever, we'll make sure all the handrails are tight, the stairs are secure, those kind of items, make sure that, you know, there's sufficient lighting outside. And then, we'll also make sure that the exterior is compliant with all of our Peachtree City ordinances, such as, you know, high grass and weeds, accumulations of brush, firewood storage, those kind of things. When we move inside, we'll look at the bedrooms. There's computations for the bedrooms on the rear. Each individual bedroom has to have at least 75 square feet for an individual person, and then, at least six square foot of closet space per person to be considered a bedroom. If you want to have additional people in there, there has to be an additional 50 square feet per person with a maximum of three people. So we'll figure out the size of the bedroom. We'll do the measurements. We'll see how many people can live in that bedroom or stay in that bedroom. And then, we will total it all up at the bottom to get a total number of occupants allowed. We'll also, while we're inside, we will make sure that they have an area set aside for all their short-term rental postings, such as their phone numbers for their contact people, their occupational tax certificate, and their short-term rental compliance certificate. We'll also do interior compliance with the International Property Maintenance Code. Again, again, we're looking at stairs, handrails. No exterior locks on interior doors, privacy locks only, like on a bathroom or a bedroom. Obviously, that doesn't stop a person from having an owner's closet with a lock on it, but you can't have an exterior lock on a bedroom door or a bathroom door. And then, finally, the telephone landline. That's part of the ordinance. We will also make sure that they have the landline phone that works. We have a way we can contact September, excuse me, 911 dispatch, and we'll make sure that it works. They know where it goes to. Then we'll sign the form off and we'll turn it over. And hopefully, everybody will pass.
Also, as part of the application, we're going to be doing a background check on the owners. Make sure that they are felony-free for the last five years and that they have not been convicted or plead nolo contendere for two years for municipal convictions, then that's everything except traffic. And we will also mail every resident property within 500 feet of the, of that short-term rental, the local contact phone number. So if the neighbors have any issues, they know who to call. As far as enforcement, we'll be using the municipal guidelines for enforcement. It's a three-strike policy within a 12-month period. So that first strike will result in a citation and a $500 fine. That second strike would be a citation and the maximum $1,000 fine. And then, that third strike, should it occur, would be a $1,000 fine. Plus, they will have their permit revoked, as long with their occupational tax revoked, for 20, a period of 24 months. And then, that owner cannot apply for a new or another permit, a short-term rental permit, anywhere in the city for another 24 months. So this is a basic, almost like a buffet, of options for an ordinance. And we're happy to answer any questions you have about this. And if you have anything that we can respond to, we'd be happy to.
Thank you. First of all, we, for those who are maybe live-streaming, we do have a lot of people in the audience. Just out of curiosity, could I get a quiet show of hands if you would support eliminating short-term rentals in Peachtree City? Thank you. Can I get a quiet show of hands if you would support reasonable regulations of short-term rentals in Peachtree City? Third option is? No regulation. Raise your hand if you want, no regulation of short-term rentals in Peachtree City. Thank you. Thanks. Interesting. So comment to council, hundreds of details here means that we could certainly discuss this for months, you know, permutations and combinations, and I don't want us to do that. We'll come to consensus on some of the overarching ideas and leave the details to staff. It'll be an exercising council give and take, right? Nobody up here is going to get everything done the way they want to see it done. We'll get a high-level consensus without getting in the weeds. And with that, I'm going to give, start with a personal disclosure. My son and his young family live in Michigan. And when their second baby was born last year, we decided, my husband and I, to buy a little house up in a suburb near them so we could have a place to stay when we go up. And so, we own a three-bedroom, one-bath, Midwestern brick bungalow in a quiet suburb, and we had to go through the process in Royal Oak. The process was that you have to, and so we stay there whenever we go up and see them as often as possible. And when we don't go up there and use it, we Airbnb it out. So that's my full disclosure. I have an Airbnb and I'm thrilled to have it. It's in the state of Michigan. Our process for getting a permit for an Airbnb was to get on the city website, fill out a form, pay $125, and request an inspection. And the inspection reminds me a lot of Tim's inspection for code enforcement. The inspector came out, he walked around the perimeter of the house, talked to us for about five minutes, and then signed off that the property had been inspected around the exterior of the house. The $125 we paid is two years, two years' worth. So in another, whatever, year and a half, I'll have to go get another permit. I actually don't know if that means inspected again. So there are hundreds of Airbnbs in the community where I have an Airbnb. They're all permitted and registered with the city. That's the extent of it. And it's safe and quiet and clean and suburban. And so, all the city nuisance and noise ordinances apply, just like they would here no matter what. My guests have been house hunters, people relocating from another city to that Detroit suburb area. People remodeling their homes or doing home construction. One family was in for a few days after they had water damage from a storm. Most of the stays are weekend stays, and they're family-related. Someone's sister is getting married, so they're in from out of town. And they just, they want three bedrooms and a kitchen, and they don't want a hotel. Or, or, this is not the majority, but some people come in town for a Detroit Tigers game, and they're just there for a long weekend. If people tell us as Airbnb hosts that they want, they're coming because they're having a bachelor party, we tell them, sorry, it's occupied. I have that choice. I don't, I don't want parties. That is the extent of it. I am not interested in burdening our staff with anything more than absolutely necessary to register and permit our Airbnbs, our short-term rentals. We need to know where they are, how many there are. I don't see that it's necessary to do much more than that, especially if it puts multiple inspection burdens on our staff. I don't, I don't see it. I don't think it's necessary. And if we can find this to be appropriate, I'll call it regulation light, we can see how it goes. If there's some portion of that that we just need to bring back or we just feel we've just got to have fire inspections before we can move forward any further, well, then, we can revisit this, the five of us. But I think this keeps, people who own these, and I'm one of them, have a vested interest in keeping their homes beautiful and well-kept and safe. They want them occupied. I want to be a super host. I'll let you know if I ever make it. There are times when the market works itself out, and I think that we might find this is one of those times. My suggestion would be that we regulate them because if we don't regulate them, we have no idea. It's just a free-for-all out there. We have no idea who's doing what. But we need that person who is our point of contact. They need to be within an hour away at all times. And I think we can do this without burdening our staff.
Mayor, any comment?
Yes.
So I think we've all been in Airbnbs. I haven't been in an Airbnb, but I've been to VRBOs. I typically spend at least a week or two, maybe, at least, playing golf with my old Air Force buddies, being all civil engineers. And one of the things they look for when we get in there is a fire extinguisher and fire alarms and stuff because we have been in one where there was a fire and there was no fire extinguishers. And the fire alarms didn't work, and we all got out plenty of time. But, you know, we didn't have any way of putting out the fire, so we wound up putting water on the fire. Fortunately, it was a wood fire. So I think that there's something more than just walk-around building because we do have to be careful of what you can walk yourself into. So I don't disagree with you. They don't want to be elaborate. But you have to worry about specific, certain things like fire alarms and smoke detectors.
I think that's completely reasonable.
Not going to like my comments, but I might as well throw them out there. I've got a short list, so I'll go through them briefly. And for, because of time restraint, it's time restraint. So if we do a background check of the owner, how do you know who's renting your place? Do you know if it's a drug trafficker? Do you know if it's a sexual predator? Right? You have no way of knowing. The size of my house, I use this as an example. I send it to everybody. I could take on my lot. I could mow down the house. I could go to all the setbacks tomorrow, put in a permit for it. And I've got about 75, 80,000 square feet. Now, I've got like a 500, 700-bedroom Airbnb I can rent out. And I don't think, as a, living in a neighborhood, that I want to live next to a hotel. I tried to get an Airbnb in Coronado, and they have a regulation. This is near San Diego, visiting my daughter. And they have a regulation that you can't get anything for less than 28 days. So at that point, as you said, the state defines it as 30 days. Is that what we said the state of Georgia defines it as? I'm not in favor of anything that says you can go and rent a bedroom, a house, or whatever for less than 30 days in Peachtree City.
That's it?
Mm-hmm.
That wasn't bad.
Yeah.
So, so, but by that definition, you want to eliminate short-term rentals?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I call, short-term rentals, I call them hotels. I want to eliminate hotels in residential neighborhoods.
Mr. King.
Councilman. Councilman. If you could speak in the microphone.
Short-term rental. And if so, what you think about the regulations that we just put up there? Are they too restrictive?
No, they don't have microphones.
I understand. But I would like to hear from the audience if I could. But that's up to you, Mayor.
Let's, let's hear comments from council first.
All right.
Is there anything more you?
No. I, you know, I, we have 100 or so short-term rentals in this city currently. And to just ban them outright, I just don't think is the right thing to do for a property owner. I understand what Mr. Prebor is saying, but, you know, I don't see, I don't see him or anyone else building a hotel on their residential lot, but I'm sure it could happen. But maybe we could get into some zoning things and stop it, I would hope. But that's a legal question.
We can talk about that.
Yeah, we could. The other, the other thing is just that, that I, as a private property owner, I think I've got a right to rent something if I can. But it does need to be regulated. I don't want to see party houses in this city. I don't want to go through the mess that we went through out in the smoke crisis for the last year or so. And, you know, it's just, this is something that we can manage. That's really all I have.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Mr. Howard?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Is this on?
Yes, sir.
Now, first and foremost, it's important that we maintain the security and integrity of the different neighborhoods around Peachtree City. That's kind of what our job is, is to maintain the security and integrity of those areas. So first and foremost, first and foremost, I'm in favor of this, but it's got to be regulated. With that in mind, things like drug trafficking and, you know, sex trafficking, it's hard to get to the bottom of that unless you've done some background checks. And it's important that that gets done because I certainly don't want them. And I don't think anybody in this audience wants them in their neighborhoods, certainly. Now, what I would also like is, and I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I've got about four more things here.
You're fine.
Okay. I would love to have a certain percentage, and I don't know if this is going to pass legal muster, a certain percentage of any particular neighborhood that could be used for short-term rental. Because we certainly don't want, you know, one neighbor doesn't do any rental, but every house around the neighborhood is all rented properties, just not, doesn't, doesn't have a home feel and a secure feel and integrity within that neighborhood. So I'd like to, and I don't know if it'll pass muster, but I think a percentage could be put into the, into this requirement. We didn't mention anything about ADA. And I know that's maybe something, Tim, that you'll be looking into possibly for those people who come in. No, I see the, anyway, I just brought it up. I got it as a note.
It would be more commercial.
Yeah, ADA doesn't apply to
Won't apply.
private residence. It's commercial only.
Thank you. I didn't realize that. We also need to think about how we get to make sure that Airbnb and VBRO and all the others post stuff that comes from Peachtree City. They need to know what their websites, these are the restrictions that you have if you're going to rent within Peachtree City. And you need to make sure you can meet all those restrictions.
Such as?
It's just like a background check, for instance.
Are you talking about background check on the tenant?
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I used the wrong term. No, it's not a background on that. But there are certain things that, and I'm trying to look at my notes fast, how many days they're going to be staying. You talked about 28 days being the minimum. How about no parties? They have to agree to have no parties or entertainment. That they're not going to sublease this. They get a rental, they've got it from an agency, and how about subleasing it to whomever they want? You don't want to have any subleasing of these pieces of property. You've got one people coming, one person coming in and the owner. That's it. Or a rental agency and the person coming in, not a second person coming in. But I mean a second, I mean a sublease. And I think... Does anybody really have a landline anymore? I think it's a rarity at this point. And I think pretty much And I think pretty much most of the people in the United States have these mobile phones, and they can communicate. But if it's gonna be a requirement, Robin, I guess that's gonna be part of the
That is up to you all.
It does not have to be.
Yeah, I know. I'm just saying, it's in there now. And with that, I'm done.
Madam Mayor?
Absolutely.
I just responded to your comments, could I say? So basically, I feel like what we've been all talking about. I think we need to have some, obviously, some guidelines, laying it all out the way we did. I'm not so sure about twenty-eight days or thirty days, but it needs to have a limit placed upon it. I agree completely that we need to have background checks of some kind. And we all know what took place up at Smoke Rise. And I think that's the biggest concern that I have, is that we're watching out for the residents. Because it was the residents. I've, I've seen just about every video in, in the Smoke Rise area that they took all the people were coming in and out on buses and have clad dress people and stuff. And I think that we gotta make sure that that's not gonna happen again. And one of the big things that I was very pleased with was the fact that the police chief can actually go out and enforce some of these things. Because I've, I've been told that when they've gone up to the door of that Smoke Rise apart, the house, they could knock on the door, but they couldn't go in, and they couldn't enforce anything. And right now, in this particular ordinance, the police chief, it says him or her, so I'm glad they got that right, can actually go in and enforce some of the restrictions in this. So I think there's a lot of good things in here that I really like.
So, so that's what we'll have to, we'll wrap up in, in listing those things. And Mr. Prebor, I gotta say, I think four of us would like to see responsible regulation of short-term rentals as opposed to banning them.
Okay, so you guys are okay with less than twenty-eight days and thirty days? I mean, is that right?
It's defined as...
Yeah, we've been living with it for a good little bit of time.
We have, and you'd hate to live up there in Smoke Rise and have no next door.
Well, I understand, we had an incident, I, but...
And something in Windmead, there was something, that it was a group reported as an Airbnb, although they said ultimately it wasn't an Airbnb.
Correct. So I think the things that prevent that from happening again are the exact same things that prevent that from happening in your house and my house and your neighborhood and your neighborhood. And that is our wonderful public safety.
And I think we need to watch out for, I think we need to watch out for the detached houses. You know, those sheds and all those things that
Now, the detached houses are not rentable. That's, that's going to stay the same.
That's right.
That will not be an issue. The guest houses, pool houses are not rentable.
Right. Very important.
So what we're back to is, uh, I have a question about criminal background checks. Some, in some cases, we're talking about, we're talking about the homeowner, right?
Yeah.
Yes, the owner.
I spoke on that.
Why would we need a criminal background check? But some of us have owned our homes for, I'm seeing them nod their heads, have owned these properties for ten years or more. Now, now, and they've been renting them out, by the way. Now we want them to go in and get a criminal background check?
Can, can I ask?
Wait, let me hear this.
Uh, uh, yeah, I, I'm agreeing with you, Mayor. Run a background check on me, you might get embarrassed or something, but I've been here for thirty-five years and I've owned my house for at least that time.
I think Matt's coming up here.
All right, I'd love to hear it.
Matt, take a quick ask.
So, uh, let me just start by being clear. I'm not the author of the ordinance, and I have really no particular support or opposition to the ordinance in any way. But just as a matter of education on that point, my interpretation of the, the purpose of the background check on the homeowner doesn't necessarily have anything to do with the people staying there, but is the homeowner prone to perpetuate similar type of crimes, such as installing surveillance devices to capture video of people, which they then publish on a website? Or are they inclined to rent to a certain, uh, type of criminal element that may then, uh, perpetuate some other type of crime? So it's not really just probing for the sake of probing, but seeing if there's any, uh, available record that would indicate they may be doing something with a property that is related to another type of crime.
And then how long, you said earlier today, how long does it take if somebody has to, uh, register as a sex offender? How long do they have before they have to register themselves?
Well, oddly enough, the, the Georgia law is not really well-designed for that, but they have at least two weeks, uh, that a registered sex offender could stay there without having to register at that address.
That's something to think about.
Well, let me, let me ask you a question. How long does it take, uh, you know, either we, in Thursday night's meeting, we have a various request that, uh, you have to do a background check on a, an individual as the owner of a convenience store selling liquor. How long does that background check take?
How long does it take to complete?
Yes.
A day or two?
What's the big deal?
Yeah, what's, what's the issue?
Well, if a tenant goes in there and you don't know if they're a, a drug trafficker or a sex trafficker.
We're not, we're not doing criminal background checks on tenants.
Okay, no, I know, and I'm telling you, that's kind of, that's kind of my, one of my biggest issues is the fact that you don't know, if you're living and you have your grandkids, you don't know who's next door.
Well, you don't want a realtor sells the house next to you.
Well, yeah, you do, you find out, because they live there and they're permanent. They're not there for a weekend and then gone, and they're for a weekend and gone. Again, to me, it's, it's allowing hotels. If you go to a hotel, you, you, you take, you make sure you take those precautions. If you don't know who's next door, you know.
Once again, people who own these properties have a vested interest in making sure everything is safe and clean, well-maintained. They have a responsibility through the...
That is their house, they want to make sure it stays whole.
Exactly, exactly. And I'm speaking from firsthand personal experience, and I, I think there's a lot of firsthand personal experience in this room over many, many years. I see the heads nodding.
But there's a lot of people that, that don't live at the house.
Oh, some of these will, will be people who do not live at their property, correct?
Okay.
Yeah, that's how it works.
So, at, at that point, they're looking for a return on their investment.
Well, guilty. Guilty.
It's, it's America in a commercial zoning, not in a residential zoning. I'm all for it in a commercial zoning.
So the purpose, and this is in our staff presentation, the purpose of regulating short-term rentals is to protect the health and safety of current city residents and visitors, and to preserve the residential character of the neighborhood. We have the opportunity to allow these private property owners to responsibly rent out their homes or portions thereof, while also adhering to our nuisance ordinances, our noise ordinances, our parking requirements, the trash behind the barrier requirements. There, there are mechanisms in place to keep this community clean and safe, even under the set of rental circumstances.
No, I was just saying, that's, the big concern for me is that the residents. You know, whatever, whatever we're gonna let people do, we have to remember that they're renting their property out, but it's still in a residential area. And it needs to be remembered that it's a residential area.
Preserved, yeah.
Yeah, I have, um, one more comment. It just flashed into my mind here, because I thought about this, and I think I spoke to one of all of you here along the way, is we're gonna have homeowners making sure they stay within the laws that we put together, this ordinance that we put together. If they violate that, and they're gonna be making some good money, which, that's good for them, but if they violate it, they get a five hundred dollar fine. That's chump change. And today, that is chump change. I'm thinking that if they really want to run a good system and not have any violations, and they'll be fine. But if they let it go and something happens and they violate some of the laws that we put in here, I think the, the penalty should be a little stiffer than a five hundred dollar. That's part one. Part two is if they did it, do it three times, and they can't, uh, the owner can no longer, uh, put a permit in. What about the other family members? Can they get a permit for that while the person waits two years before they get another chance to put a permit in? We may need to tighten that up just a bit more.
It would be the property owner, the property owners.
Owners, okay. Plural.
Yeah.
Got it?
Yeah.
Okay, but the other one about the, about the, uh, the fees and stuff, not fees, but the penalties and for violation, should be a little bit stiffer to make sure everyone stays in compliance with the law? Because really, what it comes down to is we're, we're still trying to maintain the integrity and the safety of that community.
Councilman, so I, I hear what you're saying. So my question would be, if, if this is the direction that council wants to go as far as the fines and the fees are concerned, I would just need a recommendation of a number that you have in your mind, so then we can tell staff to come back and put that together.
I have, I have my own recommendation, but it's certainly, it's open for discussion here.
Let's hear it.
Mine would be a thousand dollars first to fine. After that, fifteen hundred. And after that, two thousand. Now, I, maybe there's some legal things we can't do, but I'm just throwing it out there. You asked for numbers, I gave you some numbers.
Yes, so, um, good evening, my name is Marsha Moran. I'm the, uh, solicitor here at the prosecutor for our municipal court. Pursuant to our city ordinance, section one dash eleven, whenever, uh, general penalties and continuing violations, it states whenever in this code, any ordinance in the city or the act is prohibited or is made declared to be unlawful, or any ordinance of doing so in act is declared unlawful, the penalty, I'm skipping, of any such provision shall not exceed a thousand dollars. So we can't go a thousand dollars per violation. So you can start out at a thousand, and the second one can be a thousand, and the third violation can be a thousand.
But can it be a violation per day? If they violate it, you know, they're there for two or three weeks, and every day they violate it.
Absolutely, each day and each act is a separate offense.
Okay, thank you.
So, uh, Tim would be able to write, uh, a citation for not having the fire extinguishers in, in, in the room on one day and then go back, yes, so.
I just, the reason for me bringing up, making it monetary, because it would make sure that the, the people who own it, they want to keep their place safe. But at the same time, they should keep their, the people that are there renting it safe at the same time. And they want to preserve it, and they want to preserve that for the neighborhood, to keep the integrity of the neighborhood a secure place.
You could go a thousand dollars per day per violation.
Exactly. Now, that means that, that they've gotta get it fixed quickly. Thank you, thank you very much for that explanation.
Yeah, that's a good question. What, uh, what is currently in here for penalties? Is it five hundred, then one thousand?
And then I think it's a thousand and two years they live it on.
Right.
Okay, okay. You can't live with that? Five hundred, a thousand, and then another thousand?
I think the third violation pretty much does it, it does it over here.
You made the conversation.
In twenty-four months.
For the third strike, there's only a strike.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay.
All right, so I think we actually have a whole lot of common ground. I, I prefer to support our Peachtree City property owners who want to rent out reasonably portion or all of their properties. I think we have a lot of them in Peachtree City. We don't know how many, because they're not registered or permitted, but, um, I think we're gonna find out that it's part of our economy. And, um, I, we've received a lot of emails on this. People use these short-term rentals in Peachtree City when they had, a woman in Sweetgum had a tree fall on her house, could barely find a place to live with her three kids and a dog. I, I think there is an actual service to the community by having these. I, I am one, uh, in another state. I think it's important to our economy. Um, and it ushers in people who would like to consider Peachtree City home or would like to think about relocating here. I gotta figure out what to tell you. So, go ahead.
Yeah, it sounds like, because I mean, last year we had a discussion, we didn't get in where the first thing we need to do is say, okay, we're okay with short-term rentals, four-one, Phil, sorry. Okay, then we need to look at, okay, what are the regulations that...
That's correct.
Right?
And we can't just throw all this bobs away.
Phil, this is what we looked at a year and a half ago, remember that?
That's, remember that last summer? That was so well-done. Robin had a little check sheet, and here's what's on it. It had annual renewal requi... First of all, grandfather existing short-term rentals? No, all must apply within thirty days of the ordinance adoption. Will a permit be required? Yes, one for each property. Annual renewal, I would say, let's work this out so we can do it once every two years. Is that less burdensome to staff? Why, why wouldn't we have? I've got, in Michigan, I've got a hundred twenty-five dollars, and that buys me two years. Jeff's got a comment.
For my, for my, uh, okay, my inspection... I'm sorry. For my inspection, uh, points in particular, things like tagged fire extinguishers, those are required annual inspections on the, in the tags. So if I want to make sure that they are following the rules and complying, I would have to look at them annually to make sure that they have...
In order to comply with what?
Well, if I continue to do something, you know, the fire extinguisher ordinance, and actually, the, 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 what I have in place would be a tagged extinguisher, similar to the ones we have hanging here in City Hall, and those have to be inspected annually by a service company and the tag applied to them. And if that's not, you know, if I only go back every two years, then essentially, there'd be no enforcement of that, um, regulation.
I'm still trying to figure out what, uh, requires that annual...
The fire extinguisher inspection.
Yeah, so right now...
Or a house?
Right now, no, right now...
Well, houses don't have to have them, but I would, I have that included on a short-term rental house. I have that included.
Well, what if we didn't?
Yeah, so you wouldn't, right? So right now, the way that it's written, if we're not enforcing those fire extinguisher or fire, smoke detectors, or carbon monoxide detector components, then you wouldn't need to go out and do his inspections to do that. But on a, on a, biannual, every two years, if we did that, and we made fire extinguishers a part of that inspection, what he's saying is fire inspections are done on an annual basis for fire extinguishers, and not every two years. So if he went out there in two years, that fire extinguisher technically could be expired if it hasn't been re-inspected. So if you're not enforcing that part of it, then you don't have to worry about fire extinguishers.
All bets are off, yeah.
There would be some liability involved in that too, if it didn't get inspected.
If we had that...
Only if you're enforcing that component of the ordinance. If you're not enforcing that component of the ordinance, then there's not a requirement to be inspected.
I have a fire extinguisher in my house. It hasn't been inspected in a long time.
But you're not renting it out to your house. Or maybe, maybe you are, or maybe you should. You know, if you rent it out, then you have, you have a big house. You probably have ten bedrooms, you've rented out to thirty people, and then you need to, uh...
Madam Mayor, what, what, what this is, it, it's a hybrid. It's taking what currently is based, state law for commercial buildings. And I know we are not trying to say a short-term rental is commercial, but, but state law says that commercial buildings have to have a certified tag, at least one certified tagged fire extinguisher in them that are inspected on an annual basis. And so it's a hybrid of that, trying to say that the short-term rental would, would need that.
I hear you, thank you. I appreciate that, I hear you. Did you want to add something to that?
Right now, I think we've got a consensus, and I could be wrong, of a, do it on an annual basis, and let's move on.
An annual fire inspection?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. All right. Owner occupied required, this was from your check sheet last summer. The answer is no. Whole house rental allowed, yes. Short-term rental period defined as one to thirty days. Can use, can rent out guest housed or detached building, no.
Why is that?
Well, we have an ordinance that allows guest homes in certain zoning districts, but even those guest homes cannot be rented per our ordinance. So the goal here is, if that's the case in our, in our neighborhoods, we don't want the short-term rental to, all of a sudden, this ordinance to supersede that, and now all of those guest homes that were originally not meant to be rented are being rented.
I think it was originally intended to be a way to preserve the residential character of our homes and neighborhoods. I mean, you could shoot holes in that all day long, but we currently do not allow rentals of detached pool houses, guest houses. And I would keep it, I would suggest that we keep it that way.
You still want to, you still want to rent out your garage, don't you?
Well, it's attached, so I couldn't.
Can you rent out a basement? You cool with that?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, you know, I, no, frankly, I think if somebody has a pool house, I think that would, if you, if you're gonna let them rent wherever in their basement, why not let them rent the pool house?
All right, but that's not up for debate at this point.
Correct. I hope.
Moving on. Uh, can you rent out a basement unit? Uh, can you rent out a basement unit? Yes. Parties, special events allowed? The answer is no. And these things could, these stipulations, like you mentioned, can be on the permit application too.
Yes.
Uh, require a business license? I would say no. I, I, why would we, again, I'm trying not to be overly burdensome on people who own their own property here in Peachtree City and rent it out. I would say no.
You may be surprised how many we already issue. We, we issue a lot of occupational taxes for short-term rentals already.
Why?
Yeah, because if you have, I mean, I'll tell you why, because if you, if I'm, if I'm buying a house, so I can turn it into a, a short-term rental, I'm going to do it under an LLC, right? I don't want to be held liable. I'm going to put it under LLC or a corporation at that point. I'm going to go ahead and get an occupation license, so you can't say that.
But it's not a require, it doesn't have to be a requirement.
If you say, if, if that's correct.
I'd rather it not. I mean, I, again, I'm trying to do regulation light. Cool?
What, what does it do to make it have a, a business license?
We have an ordinance that says if you operate a business within Peachtree City, you're required to pay this annual occupational certificate, tax certificate, it's like a business license.
What's the fee on that?
Um, it depends on the number of employees you have, and I think the minimum fee is something like a hundred and fifteen dollars.
There you go.
I would, I would not make it mandatory.
I mean, I, I know real estate folks that have extra, I mean, one of my friends is a real estate person, and she owns several homes, so she has, she rents out those homes like you do to make profit. Uh, she must have a business license to do that.
Not, not necessarily. If she, if she Airbnb's out, if she has five different properties, and she Airbnb's them out, it isn't necessary for to, her to have a business license to do that. And I'm saying, let's please not add yet another layer of bureaucracy on these property owners.
But if they're filling out all the other paperwork, why not?
Because it's one more layer. I see the heads not, it's one more layer of burea- that's like saying, you got to get three permits, why not get four?
Let's move on.
Well, I need consensus on that. Frank and I and Mike think we can move on without that.
Make that four.
Thank you. Um, to, to collect lodging tax, yes, of course we do that. Required to meet fire codes. All right, we're going to do the annual inspections as recommended. Off-street parking is required. Requires local contact agent, age twenty-one, available within an hour, yes. Uh, STR permit posted on site. Frankly, as a property owner myself, I would not care if that thing was posted on site or not. I don't know who inspects for that or how we can enforce it. I would do without it.
Would you repeat it again?
What does that mean?
Your permit, when you get your permit, I ha- and I have one in Michigan. Does it have to be displayed publicly in the house somewhere? Mine isn't.
Must be posted on site. It doesn't mean in the site, in the building, it just means on the site.
Can you guys speak up a little better?
Oh, sure, thank you.
You want to say?
No, go ahead.
It just says that the short-term rental permit that you're going to get would be posted on the site. That doesn't mean in the building, it just means on the site. And we're questioning whether or not we need to have a permit posted on site.
No, the permit's necessary. The question is that it has, does it have to be posted? It ain't a hotel, it's a house.
I don't really think it needs to be posted on site.
Thank you. Uh, fines for violation, we already talked about that. Application fees, can we readjust our application fees, Mr. Kurnau, based on, I mean, my understanding is that these fees cover the inspections?
That's correct. So if we're sending a, a fire marshal out there to do an inspection, there's a fee associated with that for the time that takes to do the inspection. Same would apply for a code enforcement, uh, person to go out there. And then any recoup of the administrative aspect of it for keying in the information to issue the permits, or any of those other things to document what's actually transpiring. So basically, we put the fees in there associated with a return only on those, uh, you know, individual items.
Is that how you came up with the four hundred for the permit fee? You added up all of theirs?
Yes, that's correct.
And costs of doing the things?
Yes, there's a.
And is it just a break even on that? Just the cost and your, whatever it is, then you put it in there? Not like a hun- extra hundred dollars or something like that?
No, this is, uh, this is a cost for, um, the time and the associated administrative cost only, yeah.
All right, I'm moving on. Applicant must be a U- no, we've, we've gone past last year's list, and I guess we've added this year's list. Applicant must be a US citizen, yes.
Oh, you know, that's not in the ordinance. That, that's been removed.
Sorry. Um, consent to a criminal background check? Everybody overruled me on that, huh? All right. Uh, notify neighbors within five hundred feet, I would say no. That's a lot of staff time and a, and a lot of burden.
I would disagree with that. I certainly want to know.
I'd disagree with that too.
Uh, let me hear from Clint and Frank.
Frank, go ahead.
I think the residents, like up in Smokey, I need to know that there is a rental home that's going, that's being rented out. So I think they ought to be notified. How we notify them, I don't want to put a burden on the staff.
Well, that's what it is.
Well, that's why we charge the annual fee. We need to go up on the fee then.
That's, maybe we go to four hundred and fifty dollars or whatever, just to.
But otherwise, otherwise, the residents, if we're trying to maintain a resident neighborhood, the residents of that neighborhood needs to know that that particular house is going to be rented out.
I totally disagree. I can't imagine having to notify neighbors of mine in a property I own, that I've got renters in there. I, I couldn't disagree more. But all right, I know it, I'm beat. What's your vote?
My, my vote is that they need to be notified, uh, although I perfectly understand that within probably thirty days, they're going to know it anyway.
I, I think not. I think actually, we have a lot of properties in Peachtree City where it's quiet, it's residential, and it's respectful.
I'd want to know if I live somewhere that, that I don't know who's going to be living next door, so I don't let my grandkids go out there and play.
So you have to notify.
When I don't know who's renting there.
When do you notify the neighbors? This is a one-time thing, when?
It's, the notification.
Just a minute, please.
The notification includes that local contact phone number, and so it would be once a year unless they change that local contact number, and then we would do it again within ten days of that change.
So it's just.
Every year?
So it's just a notification. It's not asking for permission or anything, it's just notification.
Notification with that local phone number, so that ideally, that's the number they would call.
All right, all right. I know it, I'm beat. Fire marshal inspection, yes, annually. Uh, occupational tax certificate?
That's the, we, that's the business license.
That's what we already covered?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, any other info as may be required by the planning department? We don't need that in there, do we?
It gives us in the future, if there's something that comes up, that, that's actually a pretty generic language in all of our building permit applications. It just gives us, if there's some unique circumstance, it gives us a little bit of.
I think that was written when Frank was the chair of the planning.
All right, everybody's good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Personally, I think that's overkill, but it's, it's required, I guess, in most ordinances. And that's a generic.
It is a generic.
All right, all right, all right. Uh, the abandonment or failure to use a residence as a short-term rental for a period of twelve consecutive months for any period shall be deemed an abandonment of the short-term rental use, and the owner shall be required to obtain a new short-term rental permit for the property. I, I would vote against that. I think, I think that's burdensome, difficult to track, hard to enforce.
How do we know that it hasn't been rented out?
Um, so there is, there are several third-party monitoring services that we would like to, and realistically need to contract out, and they can give us a report daily, weekly, monthly, however often we want it, that lists all the properties and whether or not they comply with our ordinance.
Hey, Robin? That just seems like a lot of money that we're going to have to spend just to find out if something's rendered or not.
It's seven thousand dollars a year, and it was part of the fee structure. It was covered by that. That's why that fee was estimated to be that amount of four hundred dollars.
Be that as it may, we still don't need to have a revocation if it hasn't been rented out in twelve, in twelve consecutive months. Can I get an opinion on that?
I agree with that.
Yeah, we'll take that one out. Uh, permit may be revoked, yes. Permit may be transferred, no. Landline required, no.
You can say that. First of all, I said I do have a landline, because I put all my trash voice messages there, but other than that, I agree, we can get by with cell phones.
So one of the things, if I can say, is in, in this kind of, I think where this originated from, the landline, is when you call nine-one-one, it actually registers the address of where you're calling nine-one-one from. And in, in certain locations on a cell phone, it won't do that for you, won't give you the address. If I'm calling from out of state, this is one of those safety issues. If I'm calling from out of state, I don't know the address, or it's not clearly posted, um, then I can't give the operator, nine-one operator, my address. If something happens and I'm staying there for a short period of time, I might not have committed that address to my memory to say, the reason I'm calling is because of X, and my address is XYZ. So there are certain systems that will provide addresses to nine-one-one when you call, uh, things like that. They would need to be pre-registered. So like, if you have a voice-over IP, or you have a wireless router, or you have something like that that actually has that information in it, so if you were to call from, uh, uh, you know, a phone that's connected to the wifi or something like that, it has the ability. But it really is a safety issue when you call nine-one-one for them to actually know where you're calling from.
Yeah, so it needs to have a landline.
Bob, I've got it, got it.
Are you saying that we need to go out there and require people who haven't had a landline in fifteen years to install one?
Yeah, it'll be in each of the bedroom. Well, yeah, if they're going to, if they're going to make it a hotel, then all hotels have them. You can't go to a hotel that doesn't have one.
Mayor, again, this is totally up for council's interpretation. The reason that it was in here is for that addressing component for calling nine-one-one. So if there is another mechanism that was available, that somebody on a phone, if you're outside the address, or if you're outside the building in the backyard in something, you need to call nine-one-one, and I don't live there, and I use my cell phone, it's not going to register the address of that location on a nine-one-one call.
Hey, Bob, a quick question I've got for you, is what, what would be the cost of a landline in today's market? Are we talking fifty bucks a month?
Fifty bucks? I mean, you, everybody could, the whole, the whole place could share the line, right?
So, it's not like it's, we're, we're putting a big burden on the people there at fifty bucks a month.
First of all, it would be the owner, the property.
Of course.
So they could change five different people renting it. The owner of the property would have it installed, and it would be there, right?
Exactly.
So again, it, it's up for interpretation. If there's a mechanism in place that provides the address of the nine-one-one caller, then, then by all means, that, that's what I would say this is kind of talking to. So yes, I see the hands out there. I understand how that works. And sometimes it does provide that information through Annie Alley, when you call nine-one-one through the dispatch. But there are times when it does not triangulate you or give you that exact location. So in, in that situation, that's the, that's why that data was in there. That's why that information was in there. So whether you want it to be part of it or not, that's completely to council.
I do not want that to be part of the requirement. Ridiculous.
I mean, I, I think it's a good thing to have, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't vote against it.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Would I vote for it?
Yes.
We need to know. Landline required?
I'm going to bring, I'm going to bring the assistant chief up here to talk a little bit about that.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so just a couple of factual things about the way the nine-one-one system works. If it's a landline, and it's a traditional landline, when it's set up, it is associated with an address that nine-one-one center will receive. A lot of even landlines these days are not traditional landlines. They're actually like a voice-over IP type service, uh, and those have to be intentionally paired with an address. We actually have people with what they would call a landline that's actually like a voice-over IP type phone, uh, or another IP type phone, and those are not paired with their address, and then they're surprised to find that. Now, of course, if they read all the details when they set that up, they would know that they needed to, to set that up manually. Uh, in terms of a cell phone, a cell phone is, I guess, I'm trying to never say never, but pretty much never associated with an actual address. Uh, there are circumstances under which you compare the cell phone with an address, but certainly, if you are staying someplace that you don't live, and you call nine-one-one, it is not going to give an address. We could usually get a GPS location if they call nine-one-one. That doesn't happen if they call a non-emergency number. If they call nine-one-one, we can get a GPS location, which is helpful, but not always completely precise. Uh, many times, I've been out at someplace, like, hey, we got a nine-one-one call, here's a GPS location. I'm standing here, looking at four different houses, trying to figure which one they called from. And hopefully, it's not really important. So do with that what you will. I just wanted to make sure that we're factual about what the capacity is and what nine-one-one we are receiving when that happens.
That changes my vote.
I still don't know what your vote is, Frank. My, my vote is.
I would say we don't need it.
I would say we don't need it. Okay. Landline required, no. Guest registry and vehicle license numbers, I would say no. I find that to be completely burdensome.
Registry and?
Guest registry and vehicle license numbers.
Every time I go to a hotel, I got to give my license.
That's why they're not staying at hotels, they're staying at Airbnb's.
You know, there's a reason.
But here in Peachtree City, every time you enter the city limits, they're, they're, they're plate readers. And we know if there's something nefarious about that particular owner. So, you know, I think that would be just a duplication, and we don't need it.
So we would, they would, they wouldn't sign into the, to your house? And they, when they show up at your place, they don't take down their name or address or anything?
I know every guest that stays in my property. I know them. I have their, all their information, credit card information, personal information, but I don't share that with the city.
Okay.
In Michigan.
It's written down somewhere that you know.
It's online through the Airbnb system. Yeah.
And, and how, we would do that somehow when someone registers in Peachtree City?
The question is, do we need to require property owners who do Airbnb to provide us, the city, with a guest list and vehicle license plate numbers?
How would that be done?
So the purpose of this would be, if there had been an incident, that we would be able to, uh, go in, request this information from the owner, and then verify who was there, who was not supposed to be there. Um, and ask, obviously, those who are not supposed to be there to leave, or if their car is not registered. We would, it would give us the ability to tell them to leave.
But otherwise, we don't know who's there.
The, the owner has some basic, has some information on their tenants.
Well, the own, owner only has the information from the person that rents it from them. If it is subleased, they won't know who that is. So that's why I said something about subleasing.
There's no subleasing.
Subleasing is in the restrictions. I didn't hear that.
Of course it is in the permit application. Yeah, no subleasing.
Okay, no subleasing.
So if I were to go rent one online from you, and I send somebody else over there, would you have any way of knowing?
Of course not. Frank?
Now, I guess my only concern was, is not really relevant to this discussion. So I, I would say that's not required.
Thank you. And I'm out of my list, so if there's more, I don't know. Do you have enough that you can work with?
I do. So Mayor, you know, since we, we've made these changes and we've drafted all this information, what I would recommend that we do is, um, staff will go back and we'll work all of this back into another draft, and we'll bring it back to another workshop, so you all can take a look on it, get another set of eyes before we actually go through the rest of the process. So we'll schedule that for an upcoming workshop. Then the process after that would be, since this does impact some of the land use, it would need to go in front of the planning commission. And then we would bring it back in front of council, once everybody has looked at it and agreed to it, for a first hearing, and then a second hearing, as we would normally do under the ordinance situation.
And can you, um, I, I know we, um, I don't know how many inspections we actually eliminated, but if there's an adjustment to the fees too, that might be part of what you're going to take a look at?
Yeah, so the information that we talked about, the fee structure, and what we heard in regards to how much we can charge, I think, I, we can go back and look, but I think we got consensus over the amount that we can go in the three strikes. I, I saw head shaking on the three strikes.
Yes.
Okay.
You did.
So we'll, we'll add, we'll make sure that that's part, it's already in there that way, so we'll just leave it in there that way, if that was the agreed-to, uh, component?
I thought we agreed up to a thousand dollars the first time for penalties, for violations. No? We did not agree to that?
I would keep it the way it's written.
All right.
I just have a question. This was something I read not long ago, where a couple had gone to, I think it was a VRBO, but don't hold me to that. I don't want to get anybody, any firm in trouble, but they had rented, uh, they had rented one of these places, and there was, they had a party, and they had used drugs. And then when they moved out, the next couple that came in had a small baby, and was playing on the ground, and got some of the drugs and died. I, I don't know how we can stop any of that. Certainly nothing we talked about tonight, but, uh, we need to, I guess, at least be mindful of the fact that they, they need to know what they're getting into when they start renting these places out. You never know who's going to be there before you.
We all do. We all do. All right, anything else?
No, that's it for this. So again, what we'll do is we'll bring it back to you in another workshop when we revise all those changes in the draft.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Filming.
Yeah, we're going to introduce Kathy Wilder, who's going to present this to us.
Good evening. Tonight, I am presenting on a proposed film ordinance. All right, so, um, as you may know, the film industry has grown tremendously in Georgia. Um, the governor's office reported four-point-four billion dollars spent by the film production industry in fiscal year twenty-two. Um, and over four hundred productions were done in Georgia, and a lot of them were done here in Fayette County. We're seeing a lot of inquiries in Peachtree City for filming. Um, and not just an increase in the number, but also in the complexity, so requests for things with special effects. Um, going into the lake, doing stunts, um, using firearms, and things that we have not previously had experience with. Um, and below, there's just some photos of some of the productions that we've had, uh, recently in Peachtree City in Fayette County. So our current procedures, um, we don't have a film-specific ordinance in place, um, including permit or fees. So currently, uh, there's no single point of contact for them to go to when they want to film in Peachtree City. So right now, if they want to film in a park, they're reaching out to me in the recreation department, and we're running it as we would, like a facility rental, like renting the pavilion at Drake Field. Um, and we recently started putting them through a special events team meeting, which has worked pretty well. Um, and if they want to film on other city property, we don't really have a permit or process in, in place for that. Um, they'll hire police or fire if they need it and get a signed permit. Um, if it's on private property, if they need signage, look at the permit. If they need police, they'll uh, go to them directly. Um, we've seen films going on in town without permits. Uh, disruptions have happened, including parking in streets, um, lighting, impact neighborhoods, um, noise, unknown road closures, uh, extra traffic, um, and we've had unpermitted building of sets. And uh, we also currently have no violation procedures or fines in place to enforce on them. Um, so just a little history of what we've seen in the past few years. So in twenty twenty-two, I, at the recreation department, received about fifteen requests. Um, and the police department worked fifty-four different jobs for three hundred and thirty-eight hours of work total. Um, and in this year, I've received six so far, and the police department has worked about thirty-one jobs. And I will say that these are requests that are coming to me, so they don't always end up going through the full permit process. So even them just reaching out to me and, you know, asking, can I use Drake Field or can I use a park to film? There's a lot of back and forth, lots of emailing, phone calls and site visits that have taken place, which we're not getting any fees for. Um, so the purpose of this ordinance is to provide guidelines, procedures and fees for film hurting, film permitting. Um, and we want to encourage film production, but also protect the city's and the residents' best interests. So this will establish an application and review process. And um, also provides a fee schedule, um, for facility use and administrative time. Um, and we will regulate, you know, filming that's not entirely contained to private property. So anything that, you know, spills into the roadways or impacts residential areas, and I'll get into that in a moment. Um, we'll regulate filming on city property, um, any impacts to residential areas as well. So here are a few of the proposed, um, regulations. So to describe the application process, um, it will have a central point of contact. So we will have a film liaison in the recreation department, and any filming in the city is going to go to that contact person. And they're going to submit an application and pay a fee first before starting the phone calls and the, the emails. They're going to first pay a basic application fee to entertain filming in the city. Um, and this has to be done at least ten business days in advance. Um, and if it's shorter than that, we have a rush fee in place. Um, films act on a very tight timeline, so they don't always know, you know, way far in advance that they're gonna be coming in. So, um, we do have a short timeline on this for them. Um, then the application is reviewed and the film liaison will, you know, communicate to the affected departments, whether that's public works, the police department, uh, fire department, and we'll run it very similar to the special events, uh, process. Um, but with more film-directed guidelines. They'll have to attend a meeting, um, to make sure that everybody's on the same page and we know what's going on. And then approval or denial will be communicated after they've gone through that meeting. So here are some of the proposed regulations within the ordinance. Um, a permit will be required if they are impacting public space. So we have seen some things that are taking place, they're, you know, using private property, but it's still impacting traffic, impacting the roads or requiring city services. So in this case, if it was taking place on private property, they would still require a permit if it's in any way affecting public space. Um, there would be fines for violations. So if they were operating without a permit or violating any of the guidelines within the ordinance, we'd be able to fine them. Um, it will require written permission from property owners, which must be submitted through the application process. And uh, notifications would be required to businesses and residents that would be impacted by the filming. And they have to do this at least three days in advance of the filming taking place. Um, it would require safe parking in neighborhoods, so no, um, blocking stop signs or impacting line of sight or pedestrian access. Uh, there are guidelineing, guidelines for lighting impacts. So where they're directing their lighting, these films tend to have large sets. Um, so they want, want it to look like, you know, daytime even when it's night. So, um, they can't, you know, shine lights into residential, into homes. Um, noise restrictions, so trailers, generators, uh, slamming doors, things like that cannot be uh, in residential areas and unless they have some sort of mitigation effort in place. And if they're going to request any road, sidewalk or path closures, they have to use the police department to help guide traffic. Um, we've seen impacts, especially during, um, when schools letting in and out. If they're filming in a park and they're blocking the cart path, that can cause some disruptions. So we'd wanna make sure that the police was involved in that. Um, a local contact person would be required. So a lot of times the person applying for the permit is not going to be on site during those filming days. So we would wanna make sure we have the contact of a few people who are gonna be on site during the filming process in case there's anything we need to discuss with them. Um, they're not able to alter any city property or vegetation. Um, we've gotten requests to cut down trees, uh, make buildings look like different things for a film set. So, um, so it would have to be permitted and, and, um, they wouldn't be allowed to do those things. Uh, special effects would require written approval. So, um, if it's something that needs to go through the fire department, they would be able to discuss that with them in the meeting. Um, we would check on tent and fire code restrictions. So, um, the fire marshal would be involved in, in permitting any tents, um, making sure they have the proper fire extinguishers on site. And, um, regulating food trucks as well. A lot of them use catering services, um, which tend to come in food truck form. Um, and we'd wanna make sure that EMS access is available, not only for the filming site, but that access wasn't restricted if they're driving through the area. They can't block any sort of path for emergency vehicles. They would have insurance requirements, just like we currently do with special events. We would ask that no motorized vehicles be allowed on park space, sidewalks or fields without prior approval. Um, they would have to fill out a signed permit. So they currently have a signed permit in place, but we would need contacts to reach out to in case they left the signs out for too long. Um, and they would have to make sure that they met health department requirements, not only for food inspection, but also for restroom needs, and we would need proof of those, um, requirements. Alright, so fees, um, there's a number of different fees that, that we've put in here. Um, based on our research on what other cities in the metro Atlanta are charging and based on what it requires from us for our administrative time. Um, so the application fee would be two hundred dollars and they pay this, like I said before, um, before we actually start the process of, you know, going back and forth and answering all the questions. Um, a high-impact fee would be assessed, um, as an application fee if they met any of the below requirements. So if they wanted a closure of an area or restrict access, uh, if they have a crew larger than fifty, if they alter any property or vegetation, if they're gonna have special effects, require city resources or wanna set up any temporary structures, build sets, set up, up tents, their application fee would be that three hundred and fifty dollars. A rush fee, so if they needed decision quickly and they're giving us less than ten business days, they're gonna have a rush fee. And a permit change fee if they switch anything at the last minute. Thank you. You can hear me getting a little hoarse here. Not used to talking so much. Alright, so, yes, so the permit change fee would be if there's, um, making any changes to the permit within seventy-two hours of filming, which happens often. So, um, any venue changes, date changes, if they're adding more crews or changing the time, we would assess a permit change fee. Um, we've also put a site visit fee. So, um, if we have to go out and meet them somewhere, say they wanna film at the BMX track and they want us to meet there, them there to see that site and discuss it with them, um, it would be a seventy-five dollar an hour fee. And, um, sometimes, um, these larger productions, we've had staff on site for the entire day. I spent two days out at Drake Field recently, um, and that, you know, we're absorbing that cost right now. So we would have a fee that they would have to pay city staff. So we're proposing here a hundred and fifty dollars for four hours and two hundred dollars if it goes over twelve hours. Um, and that's at the discretion of the city and, and the film liaison, whether or not they would need city personnel on site. And then the police and fa, uh, EMS or fire services, that's their rate for, um, what they currently charge for films. And that's at their discretion. Um, so we would charge a, a one thousand dollar deposit. And, um, these are going to be our facility fees here that I'll discuss. So, uh, the parks, recreation facilities and buildings, this is our current fee schedule that's already been set. This is what we charge for all rentals. It's based on residency. We have commercial rates, um, and out-of-county rates as well. So that's if they are just using a part of the park, it's still open to the public. And that's what we did for the recent filming down at Drake Field. People were still able to walk around. So we assessed the, just the standard facility rental fees. Athletic fields, same thing here. The park is still open, the fields are still open, public can come through, they're just using a small part of it. Um, so city-owned parking lots, we're proposing two hundred and fifty dollars a day. If they're just parking, let's say, five, ten cars there, people can still use a parking lot, um, they're not taking up all the spaces. However, if they're going to close it down completely, restrict access to the parking lot or use up all the spots, it starts at a thousand dollars a day. And these are options for closures, not saying that we have to close facilities or any time that it's requested. We will close down a park or building. These are just some options to get us started. Um, we have not, at this point, closed anything down recently for filming. Um, but for closures, for any low-impact facilities, um, and these are ones not listed below, and I'll discuss the high-impact ones in just a moment. But, um, to completely close it down for low-impact facilities, four thousand dollars and up, um, plus any affected salaries, benefits, operating costs for the day. Um, and this is really on a case-by-case basis that we're looking at. Now, the high-impact facilities are the ones that I have listed below. So Drake Field, Picnic Park, Line Creek, Battery Way Park, Macintosh Trail, Kedron, Library, Glenlock, Box Office Gathering Place, Macintosh Place. Um, that's to completely close those down, so no public access. And, um, those start at twenty thousand dollars and up. Um, and like I said, this is not something that has to be done, but it's a case-by-case basis and would, would require approval um, from the city manager. And, um, it's, it's a starting place if we were approached or wanted to entertain doing something like that. Um, and violations, so it would be a one thousand fine per day if they are not, or if they don't have a permit. Um, plus double the cost of the permit. So we would assess what it would originally, originally cost them and then charge them double that. And a one thousand dollar fine a day if they have a permit, but they're in violation of the ordinance. Um, these are just some of the communities that we looked at to gather some of this information. Um, a lot of metro Atlanta cities and a lot of communities in our area. And I, I discussed it with several of the other neighboring communities, city of Fayetteville, um, Fayette County, Tyrone. Um, and they are all in the same place as us right now, kind of taking a look and, um, looking at their ordinances and wanting to change and assess how they do their fees. And then also, if there's any questions or discussion?
Counsel?
No, no questions. I think this is good.
Yeah, I mean, this is something that if we go forward, uh, could tweak it if we needed to at any point, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Something that, uh, and it, and it kinda goes back to the fines for, uh, violations, a thousand dollars a day. They'd go whoop-de-doo.
Exactly.
You know, it's like rather than going through the permit process, I'll just pay the thousand dollars. Uh, is that something, this is kind of a, a side now, is that something with inflation that we should, could think of to?
Well, I think it goes back to the conversation we had as far as the amount we're allowed to charge for fines.
For a fine for an actual violation, the fine max is a thousand dollars a day, a day. So that's the fine. Now doubling the permit fee would be something else in terms of maybe their next application. You can look at, you know, doubling the fee because you violated before, but the actual fine can't be more than a thousand dollars.
And that's from our ordinance, is that correct?
The state.
I think that was from state law.
It's actually a state law. City ordinance violations are considered quasi-criminal and along the lines of misdemeanors. So the max we're allowed is the thousand dollars and/or six months in jail.
But I think you could put in there some additional language if that's where you're going to, if they're not uh, in violation of the permit or not getting a permit, then we can not issue them one or we can escort them off of.
Raise the fee the next time they seek one.
Or, or have the police department.
So what I was just saying, I don't know if you heard me, Marshall, I was saying, okay, you know, they're, they're like, well, we could go this, we could go meet with Kathy, we could go, you know, and or we just pay a thousand dollars, two thousand dollars and.
If we get caught.
And could we stop them in the middle of it?
Absolutely.
If they want a permit.
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely, sure.
Okay, so that would be, that would be key. And then another thing that kinda goes to something, uh, we talked about earlier today, Robin, was the temporary signs where I mentioned, I'd like to see us consider those come back for garage sales. And so we're gonna let them have temporary signs. I've seen the yellow signs, they're yellow, they got black letters and they're pointing the crew where to go or whatever. So I guess I'm saying, well, if we can allow it for the film industry, we can, should certainly be allowed to let citizens have a yard sale.
Then it's political signs and then it's, oh, shit, it's a whole basket.
Well, I mean, you know, garage sale, garage sale filmmaking, I'm for them.
So again, I think, you know, that's a different topic, but if that's something that you would like to bring up and have staff bring it back to you. If I can get a consensus on that, we'll bring the sign ordinance back for you.
I'm not, I'm not interested in revisiting that sign issue. Frank?
Garage sale signs?
I'll consider a garage sale. I would too.
But it isn't just a garage sale now.
Well, it's another conversation for another day. Yep. It's a conversation for another day.
So that might be a topic for another workshop that we can bring it to you so you can have some further deliberation and talk on.
After we run out of everything else to do.
It's easy, just say you can have a temporary sign for three days, just like we did forever.
Alright, I'm hearing you.
So if you, if you get consensus on that, I'll add it to a future workshop and bring it back for the future discussion.
Yes, yeah.
I do have some comments. Um, Kathy, nice job. Done well. And Bob, I'm glad you brought this, this whole thing on the filming industry up. I think it's a good one. Um, the issue I have is what if they're doing filming and they have an accident? Obviously, those things do happen and we heard about that with Rust where someone got shot, the movie Rust. Uh, but somebody damages a property here. They're out in the parking lot here and they go too fast and they ran right into the building. Is that all covered in this structure that you've set up? Or do we revert to their insurance and we may be a long time waiting for insurance coverage to get things fixed? Just a, just a, a point that maybe you can comment on.
We, there's already an ordinance in place, destruction of city property, that's on, uh, um, one of our ordinances. And again, we can go up to a thousand dollar fine.
The fine may not get it repaired if it's, you know, it's pretty awesome damage where a truck went.
And then the city can seek reimbursement. We've done that in the past through.
And then councilman, there is a, there is a, um, an item in here that talks about requiring them to have insurance as well. So they have to present that insurance to us to make sure that they can continue moving forward. That is a requirement of.
Right, but as you know, insurance is, uh, it could be very slow before we get a, something fixed in our, in our city. Okay, that was the only comment I had. Kathy, nice job.
Thank you. Anybody else? I have one comment. We had a, um, an email late this afternoon from someone named Anna Thoman. We all saw this, I think. we all saw this, I think. Apparently she is involved in what's called low-budget movies, but low budget is anything under $500,000. And she was wondering, under those circumstances, would there be the potential for a waiver of some of these fees? Apparently, anything under $500,000 is too low to qualify for any of the tax benefits of filming in Georgia and is unlikely to have more than five local cast or crew members, each is paid less than whatever, whatever. She actually shared with us a trailer, very professionally made trailer from, it looks very interesting, but, but by definition, her film is considered ultra-low slash no budget on the Screen Actors Guild scale. So the suggested permit fees and regulations would have been crippling for her small production. So her question is, is there potential for a waiver? And I thought I saw something in here about city manager discretion, does that mean there is a possibility?
So there is, but in that situation, Mayor, I would say a waiver would, something that I would like the council to weigh in on that, to make that decision, to, to provide it. Well, not, not that I don't want to provide it, but there is a cost associated with doing that even for low budget because we would still have to have staff respond. If they're working in the lake, we might have to have rescue out there if they need to block a road or any of the other things that are happening. You know, it may qualify for small, you know, small production from the fees perspective, but if it still requires something from the, the city's perspective, we would still have to make sure that we had the right safety pieces in place. So I have the discretion, and my discretion would be, can they film in City Hall? Can I shut down that park? Can I, you know, make those discussions as a, as a manager? That's where that discretion would come in, but as far as a waiver is concerned, I would still want to recoup all of the administrative costs that'd be associated with that.
All right, well, we'll leave it at that there.
So we have consensus, you like, you're good with the, the way that it's currently written, so what we'll do is we'll, we'll put that together and we'll bring that back to a future council meeting for approval.
I just want to say, I just want, Kathy did an awesome job with this. Like Kathy spearheaded this from the very beginning and brought this to administration, our, our attention. And it started out as just kind of a policy because we didn't have one, but when we met, it kind of morphed into this ordinance because there's just so much that we really, meeting with fire and police, we were, we were like, oh, there's, this is, we got to do something. So this is, but Kathy's done an awesome job with this, so I just wanted to make sure that it's on record.
Thank you.
That she did a great job with this.
Good job, nice job.
All right, last but not least, discussion item C, policy 806, naming of facilities, parks and other areas. You have the document that was rewritten by staff, everybody okay with that? I think there's one, everybody okay with this?
I have any, do we have any?
Yep, it's the last piece of the, of the packet.
You know what, I think that the packet, I went on the computer, I'm sorry, the packet's not flowing out.
All right, we'll, we'll talk in a minute about that. Everybody okay with this?
Mayor, I think that they have put in the unanimous consent, which was the request in the last meeting that we had on this. I'm fine with it.
I'm actually not fine with it, I was going to see if we could go with a supermajority of four. Not everybody's lived here 30, how many, 35 years? My suggestion would be, the last sentence says, approval shall be by a unanimous vote of the city council. My suggestion would be, that's a bit burdensome, I'd like to see four.
Well, for something, it was just from my perspective, if you're going, if you're going to name, let's say, the council chambers for an individual, you, we, we really ought to, we, we really ought to be united in that, in that, in that, in that effort, because anyone that would have something that, that would object to, they may not want to make it public, but still, you know, that it, it would be a, it would be a no-go. But, you know, I, I really would like to keep it unanimous. The other thing I'd like to do is I don't need this to be a memorial, you know, if, if someone is alive, that, there's no reason that if they deserve it, that they can't be, we can't name something for them while they're here. And case in point is the friend. And that's just, that's my opinion.
Well, I would tell you that, the only thing, I was initially feeling the same way you did, Mike, that it needs to be unanimous. But then when you think about it, there's individuals, and no offense, Clint, but you're so new here, you don't even know who the person is we're talking about. If, if someone.
I did read about her and I talked about her.
Okay, but my point is that, you know, some of us, I, I've never met her, but I've read about her a lot.
Thank you for not naming any names, we'll leave it a general decision.
And I've talked to people that have known her a long time, including Mike in the Chamber of Commerce, friends of mine in the Chamber of Commerce have known her. And it just seems like, you know, we ought to be able to do something other than just a unanimous decision. And supermajority to me is, is as good as, as a unanimous decision, so I would agree with you, Mayor, that if we had to drop it down to that, I would accept that. A supermajority, because there's going to be people that we wouldn't know, and I would rather her not be denied this recognition. So that would be my position.
Thank you, anybody else?
Go ahead. Yeah, I mean, I, I think it should be unanimous. I think that if, whether somebody's new here and they're elected and, and Clint, he could certainly go find out about that person. There's enough, there's enough people that know that person and Clint knows enough people that he could go and, in essence, we would expect, as we all do for all issues, is to do research. And at that point, he could make his decision.
Okay, I understand.
So that, and I, so I think it should be unanimous, it is a big deal to name something after, after somebody, whether it's a, a park, a field, the amphitheater, whatever, but it should be where, I think, I think it should be unanimous.
And Mr. Howard?
Thank you, Mayor. As I said, I, I liked when the report came out and it said it was unanimous, and I would like to keep it unanimous.
All right, that's what we'll do there. All right. That's all I have.
Thank you.
We stand adjourned, thank you very much.